Good evening, and welcome. It is August 12th. It's a town board meeting. I'm the superintendent supervisor. And we will start with the, as customary, with the monthly statement from the supervisor. The Town Board Monthly Statement of the Supervisor, July 31st, 2014. To the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook pursuant to Section 119 of the Town Law, I hereby tender the following detailed statement of all monies received and dispersed by the supervisor during the month. The opening balance was $4,093,692.45. Receipts were $457,077.76. Dispersed was $749,237.65, leaving a balance of $3,801,532.56. You might want to note the transfer tax and realize that we have a fairly substantial addition to that this month, so that's going to change. We have no budget adjustments this month, so I can report that this above is a true and correct accounting of the balances shown in the books of the Town of Red Hook at the close of business on July 31st, 2014. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Second?
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Is there a town clerk?
Okay, the Town Clerk's monthly report for July 1st, July 31st, 2014. Total local shares remitted to the supervisor, $1,470.12. Amount paid to New York State Ag and Markets, $80. Amount paid to New York State Department of Health, $157.50. Amount paid to New York State Environmental Conservation, $155.88. For total state, county, and local revenues of $1,863.50. Pursuant to Section 27, Sub 1 of the Town Law, I hereby certify that the foregoing is a full and true statement of all fees and monies received by Sue McCann, Town Clerk of the Town of Red Hook during the period stated above in connection with her office.
Thank you, Claire. You can see that we have our able deputy town clerk with us tonight, Claire Horst, who's sitting in for Sue McCann. Thank you for doing that. Are there any announcements? I guess we could start to the left with the deputy supervisor. Jim, do you have any announcements?
I do not, Sue.
Okay. Brenda?
Just a couple. It's kind of like a save the date, and I think it's a little tease. It's for November 1st of this year. It's Red Hook and the Chocolate Festival. This is put out by the chamber. Maybe you've seen the postcards around town. And so for all chocolate lovers, it's a good time. And then Tivoli Village Green Committee asked us to announce that on September 9th, at the Tivoli Village Hall, at 7:00, there will be a solar energy conference. And it sounds really great. They will have presentations from three leading solar energy providers in the area. They'll have information about energy grants from the state. And there'll be a lot of time to ask questions. They'll have reps from Sun Dog Solar, from Hudson Solar, from Solar City, and also from the state's Nicerta Group. And they'll have refreshments. So that's September 9th, 7:00, in Tivoli Village Hall.
Great, thank you. Harry, do you have anything?
I don't have an announcement. Do you want me to do this now or later?
I think we'll wait. You're on the agenda.
Okay. I don't have any announcements.
I have a couple of little things, some actually critical things. And one is a letter from a young life scout from Tivoli, whose name is Shane Deegan. And he says, and I want this to be read on the air because what he's doing is looking for support for this Eagle Scout project. He says, "Dear sir or madam, my name is Shane Deegan, and I am a life scout from Tivoli working on my Eagle project. I'm a member of TruP 114 in Belation, New York, and as many in Red Hook know, my Eagle project will be built in Tivoli Memorial Park. My project is an arbor bench structure which will serve as a reading and relaxation area for our community. It will be relatively large bench with an arbor over it with which plants will be growing. Under the bench will be a patio stone foundation. The structure itself will be made of azot cedar and pressure-treated wood. I've already begun work on the project, but I'm far from finished. To complete this project, I am requesting a donation to help alleviate the cost of materials. Any donation would be greatly appreciated, and the town would be mentioned in both a plaque placed at my Eagle project site and, if possible, any publication about the completion of my project. I hope to finish the project this summer." And I answered him that I would read this at a town board meeting. Obviously, the town cannot support independent projects like this, so I give him an A for communication, and I wanted to put it out there for anybody who felt that they would like to support an Eagle Scout. He can be reached at timelyshane, S-H-A-N-E, all one word, timelyshane@gmail.com. And I'm sure he would love to hear from anyone who would like to support his project. That's one. Brenda, I had the Chocolate Fest, too, and I'm so glad you caught that. It must mean that others are looking for it, too. I guess we're all chocolate lovers at heart. And I have also an announcement about the Community Development Block Grant this year. As you all know, we typically look for the Community Development Block Grant application process about this time of year. And the public hearing for the Municipal Application Policy and Procedures is going to happen on August 20th at 10:00 a.m., and that's in Poughkeepsie at Duchess County Planning. That is the general application process and what the procedures are for this application. The allocations this year will be somewhat different from what we have known in the past. We were encouraged, in fact, we were required, to be in touch with Ann Saylor from Duchess County Planning, who would meet with municipal officials before they considered an application for Community Development Block Grant applications, to make sure that the area and the focus of the application was, in fact, going to qualify, to save everybody a lot of time. And so Ann, I invited Ann here. She met with a number of us. And it turns out that the block population in the Town of Red Hook, excluding the villages of Tivoli and Red Hook, is only going to qualify for Community Development Block Grant funds for ADA, Handicapped Accessible, projects. We have just apparently stretched the income enough, or there are other areas much more needy, and I'm not sure which is the case, but we no longer qualify for things like some of the projects that we've applied for and received in the past, like the sidewalk to the Red Park. So inasmuch as there is a category of public facilities, handicapped accessible improvements, we discussed that with Ann, and we will be developing, together with the engineer that we have a contract with, a proposal that will ask for funding for handicapped accessible parking lot features, as well as a few here in Town Hall, so that we are absolutely certain that this municipal building, as we all know, we're all being encouraged to make sure are handicapped accessible, that this one is. So we've discussed it with the engineer. They are looking at it. They're coming up with cost estimates. And the application process here in the Town of Red Hook, I expect to have a public hearing on that application for ADA improvements at Town Hall on September 24th. We should have plenty of time to have the application available on the first meeting in September. Call the public hearing on the 24th. The deadline for the application to Duchess County Planning is October 17th. Can't even believe we're saying October. It seems we shouldn't be saying fall, but we're talking about it. It's coming up on us. So I just wanted you all to know that we are thinking about that application, that that is the area in which we are allowed to apply this year, or that we will qualify for application to be read, and that's our intention. And that's what I have. Sue, is somebody going to the August 20th presentation? Somebody can. Is that mandatory? No. Okay. No, it is not mandatory. But everyone is welcome to go. It clarifies for those people who are confused about the application, or who want to know more about the block situation and how it is established. The policies and procedures are clarified for anyone who has any questions about what must be followed. We've done it enough times. I didn't go the last several years, but we can get copies of the preparation for that public hearing if you'd like to see it, or if you'd like to go, Brenda.
No, I'm not here, but I thought I'd heard another town say it was mandatory.
I'll check on that. Thank you for bringing up. I'll check on that. It's mandatory that we met with Ann Saylor, and we have done that. Yeah, that is mandatory. Okay. Now, that's all I have for announcements. Is there any public comment before we start the meeting? Harry and Ann will move into the agenda, which is, first on the agenda, there is a request from Hank Van Perry, Chairman of the Red Hook Water Department, to transfer water district funds in the amount of $20,000 from the fund balance unreserved to the Reconstruction Reserve. And Jim, I don't know if you have details on that as a liaison or not, but apparently he has chalked this over with...
Yeah, Hank's mentioned that he likes to take it from fund balance and put it in reserve. That way, it's set aside for that purpose. He does that, you know, once or twice a year, every year.
Okay, would you like to make a motion?
I'll also move.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. The second is Brenda on the agenda, who will discuss the Hudson River Valley Greenway grant application.
Yes, this is a grant that comes out, I think, annually, and it's just been announced. It's sponsored by the Hudson River Valley Greenway, which is a state program that applies to the 13 counties that surround the Hudson River. And as you know, there have been many meetings in the last several months about the importance of trails and safe transportation for our residents and our students. And so lately, there's been a group that's been meeting at Bard, and it's been facilitated by Bard representatives. Sue and I have been attending. Our trails chairperson has been attending. The county often has a rep, Winnipeg Land Trust, et cetera. So many folks who are involved with trails. And we took notice of this grant opportunity, which is due September 5th. And I said that I would ask the board tonight if they would consider applying for this grant on behalf of the town, but knowing that this coalition of trails-interested folks has some input as to how the grant would read. So for one municipal, for an application whose trail involves just one municipality may apply for up to $10,000. If it involves more than one municipality or community, it may apply for up to $20,000. It's a dollar-for-dollar match, so if, and the grant money may pay for no more than 50 percent of the project. So for instance, if we applied for $10,000, the total project cost would then have to be $20,000. So I was going to ask the board if we could consider applying for this application, knowing that we do have a lot of help in the wings, and there's a small group of people that has already committed to writing this grant if the town approves. So I was thinking that we should apply for $10,000, of which I'm fairly confident we could have $5,000 of that be an in-kind service. And I already have someone from this committee who has offered to help with the $5,000 of the town's $10,000 match. So I wanted to bring that to the board and discuss. I know we don't have any more meetings scheduled for this month, and the grant is due on September 5th. This trails group is meeting Thursday. So one possibility might be to maybe schedule a special meeting on August 27th, if everybody would be, well, if people, I'm not around, but if we would have a quorum that night. So I'd like to hear your thoughts and...
Can our whole match be in in-kind services? Will you give them, do that, Brenda?
It can be. But it's, I mean, it could be, it can be, yes. The catch is, is we're thinking of doing this for planning. And, you know, some of our plans are outdated, and now there's a big movement to consider this hook trail that everybody's getting excited about, and we need to hear more about that. So, yeah, I'm not sure how much in-kind service could accommodate the planning phase. I think a lot, because one of our, one of the folks who's behind the hook trail project, he has resources, you know, people to work for him who have knowledge of things like this, and also can come up with marketing kinds of things for a trail. So I'm fairly confident we'll get a lot of match. Not in terms of laying a stone or digging a trail, you know, not in terms of implementation. It really is for planning and design. Yeah.
Now, would the grant include design as well as construction?
No construction.
No construction.
I think so.
Just the basic design and layout of this trail?
Yeah, what's been discussed at the last couple of meetings of this trails group is the importance of having a whole comprehensive plan for the whole town. And then next year, when the big-money opportunities come around, like another TAP application, or the consolidated funding application, that's when you would ask for big money to construct. So this is like a buildup to prepare us for when the larger opportunities come. So I think it's realistic to say that the town may have to spend $5,000, and we've got a $20,000 project.
Is that, would that be a multi-municipal application, what you're talking about?
Well, if we went that way, we could apply for up to 20, but we would still have, I mean, then with the multi, the multi municipalities, we'd have to pay 20. So then that would be a $40,000 project. I guess it just depends on who's going to be working with us and volunteering their time.
Both of the village, I would think, would want to participate in this, in the design.
If we do the comprehensive plan, yes.
But what you're suggesting, would they be included in that design discussion?
I don't feel that I can say that, because I'm only one person on this group. So, you know, they're going to discuss this on Thursday.
Right, so in other words, that's, we didn't get to that point yet.
Right. I mean, I know how they feel about it, but in terms of applying for this specific funding opportunity, I'm not sure that they think that's enough money to do a whole comprehensive plan. We still have some people to speak with. Sue recommended we talk to planning at the county level to see, get some cost estimates.
I think what we know we can do tonight is, is town, you know, bite off a little bit. And if we find that the villages both have burning desire to sweeten the pot, so to speak, maybe we could have a special meeting on, what was the date, 27? 27? Which would be ordinarily our middle of the, our Wednesday meeting, the fourth Wednesday of the month, if we wanted to change it.
Well, another thing we should think about is that they only have a total of $50,000 to offer this year.
Now, the grantor is who?
Hudson River Valley Greenway, and this is called the Conservancy Trail Grant?
Yes.
I mean, it's six...
That was the size of, it's a 50 cent.
I think town is probably realistic. I don't think we would.
No, the 50 is the whole Hudson River Valley. You mean, you're lucky.
Have to be no competitor just to get 10, I think.
In my opinion, it doesn't hurt to try, because we can always work out the matching. You know, obviously, we can, we can, are capable of matching.
So how does everybody feel? Shall we? Is there any competing money for, or competing application for Hudson River Valley Greenway that is going to, although it's a different category?
It is, yeah. This is just for trails.
Right.
I think that's a big issue in the broader community, trails from community to community as well as within the community.
I'd be willing to make a motion that we apply for the $10,000 planning grant with the understanding that some of it would be matching, if not all of it. That would be great.
We do need a resolution.
Okay.
But I don't have to.
Is it 10 or 22?
Well, we're just hearing.
10 was the...
We're just hearing. 50 for our hooking out, so no matter who finds something. Is that, is that something...
So do you have a model resolution?
No, I don't have a model resolution. Sorry to say.
Okay. But I second your motion.
Maybe Sue could just say, "I resolved, propose that we make a resolution."
I resolved. I resolved that we apply to Hudson River Valley Greenway for the trails grant application in time for the September 5th deadline.
I would suggest that you include the budget for a project cost of $20,000 with a grant amount of $10,000 here, specify about that, in case the rest of the time requires that.
Should we be saying up to 20 with the, now we're applying for town.
Right. With the total project cost.
I pretend with the total project cost, not to say 20.
Not to be 20. That's okay.
And is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. And Brenda, if you will, let us know when you know that we need to meet on the 28th.
I don't think we need to. I mean, you should know what the group decides and how the application goes.
We would not need, we would not need to meet again, you know?
Unless you want to do that, to discuss publicly the application, because we would still have time to figure. Yeah, you should call.
I'm feeling like we should, you know? If we're going to commit, commit to doing that, I feel like we should. Even if it's not a full quorum or a full board, if we could just take a peek at that and... No, well, it's the regular meeting on the 27th. Yeah, but it would, we would have a brief meeting that night to deal with this and anything else that comes up, yeah.
So that we will have a meeting on the 27th?
We will have a 20 meeting on the 27th.
For pertinent issues.
Yeah, and we may very well need one anyway. I'm seeing that there are some issues that we may very well need to be in the meeting. It may not be relayed outside, but we'll know by the end of the week or four. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Brenda. So the next item on the agenda, as an agenda item, is a report from Harry Colgan regarding the Duchess County Shared Services Highway Grant to the Town of Red Hook and Village of Tivoli and Red Hook and Village of Red Hook. So can you update us on what's going on?
Certainly. I'm sure a lot of people in the town know that we have received a substantial grant from the county, along with both the villages, to study the shared services with our highway operations. We had an announcement meeting, I believe it was in June, that was in this room for the public, with the expectation we'd have, in a few months, we'd have another meeting. We have since then met as, two members of each board have met a few times to discuss progress, with the intent of having a meeting. It was supposed to be this month. It looks like we will have that in September as it stands now. But we've made substantial progress. And this study will take something in a matter of a year. I think that everyone should know that we, actually, the byword statewide these days is shared services between municipalities. It's one way we hope to address the growing tax problem, meet the 2 percent tax cap, and move on with providing the services we must to each municipality. And just to give you out there a rundown of some of the things we've done, some of them recently, some of them almost a decade ago. This year, we started an animal dog park in, it's in the Town of Red Hook, on land owned by the Town of Reinbeck. And it was begun, I think it was last October, when it was open. It's been very successful, and it's done on a shared service basis with volunteers from both Reinbeck and Red Hook. And we give those volunteers a great deal of credit. One of the things that happened almost 10 years ago was, and those of you who've lived here a while, remember when you had an assessor village plus one in the town, and you had, couldn't, depending, if you lived in the village, you had two different values on your property. But that was combined a number of years ago, and I've lost track, I think, of the exact date. But there is now a single assessor here in the town, and that assessor value is consistent from municipality to municipality in the town, both villages and the town. So that was, and that's been a very successful example of shared service. Also, a few years ago, our building department has been cooperating with the Village of Tivoli. So our building inspector serves not only the town, but Tivoli. Hook. And we give those volunteers a great deal of credit. One of the things that happened almost ten years ago was, and those of you who've lived here a while remember when you had an assessor village plus one in the town, and you had, couldn't, depending, if you lived in the village, you had two different values on your property. But that was, that was combined a number of years ago, and I've lost track of the exact date, but there is now a single assessor here in the town, and that assess value is consistent from municipality to municipality in the town, both villages and the town. So, that was, and that's been a very successful example of shared service. Also, a few years ago, our building department has, has been cooperating with the village of Tivoli, so our building inspector serves not only the town, but, but Tivoli. And that has been successful. It's a very difficult thing to do. There are different laws in the village than the town, but following it myself, it looks like it's been quite successful. One of the things that, that is important to the municipality is economic development. It is, it can be an engine of jobs, it can be an engine of additional taxes that don't come out of the, directly out of the pockets of the, of the residents. And we have an economic development committee that actually meets, it's a town committee that actually meets in the village of Red Hook, and it has members from both the village and the town, and they're working together very effectively. They'll be, there's a new website that, much of what they're doing is trying to encourage development and find sources of people who are willing to develop commercially in both municipalities. And they have, have started a website, only experimentally so far, but it's expected to go live in the fall. So, if you, anywhere out there in tourist land, if you, if you Google Red Hook in the Hudson Valley, or the Hudson Valley, or Red Hook, you will, you will get, our municipality and the businesses in town are invited to, to sign on to having their businesses promoted in that way. And we hope that encourages growing tourism there. We, a couple of the businesses in town have been using this for a while with some success, but we're going townwide, and there'll be a further announcement next month. Our highway garage operation actually is, is the subject of our, of the shared service effort that I mentioned at first. But nonetheless, the highway operation between the town and the villages have been sharing efforts for some time. For instance, we in the town have, have a supply of sand, salt, and fuel oils on premises here, and we share those with both municipalities. We have, as well as the fire department. Fire departments come here to fuel their trucks, and we provide salt and, and, and sand for, for the winter, winter use in both villages. One of, one of the things that actually got me involved in, in this government, as well as, as well as Bill, and I'd say Brenda too, and it was something that was initiated by our now supervisor, Sue Crane, was the intermunicipal task force.
That preceded me, actually.
Really?
Yes, yes. Mary Rose Lambunk was supervising when that whole thing started.
I thought you were.
I know, it feels like I've been here.
And me. But anyway, the task force has been an, an engine of creativity and, and energy in the town, and it's, it continues. We, and our big hope and our objective now is to move forward with this shared services grant with the highway operation townwide. We'll see how that works out. More to come on that issue.
Okay. Thank you, Harry.
Yeah, so they really diving into the details of highway operations in the three municipalities. And just by word of explanation, the consultant, who is an objective party and really good at analyzing costs and analyzing likenesses or disparities between the two, or rather three departments, is really interesting to work with because he's done this before, and he's thinking in terms that none of us probably would, would be able to sort this all out. And it's reveal, it's going, it's, the end result is going to be very revealing, I think, for all of us. So, I'm pretty excited by the whole process. And he's very sharp and very, he's a pleasure to work with. So, in fact, also, there are two people who are working together. So, we're very fortunate to have that underway.
Okay, that's what we have on the agenda for discussion items, I believe. Are there board reports? Is there anyone who has a planning board report they'd like to share? I don't. Or zoning?
Zoning, the zoning board of appeals meets tomorrow evening, and we have three area variance applications before then for tomorrow on the 13th of August.
And there is no ethics board report? I'm going to jump right ahead, past department reports, because, bless her heart, Nancy Cascade, our tree specialist, is here and has a report. And I don't want to have everybody waiting with bated breath before I tell them. So, I think we should do you a favor. You go ahead. And Nancy, thank you for coming.
Sure.
And all that you do. If you don't mind giving your report right up front.
No, I don't mind at all.
I'm sure you'll be happy to speak.
It's short.
We'll leave the rain home.
We're in the process of preparing the documentation for reimbursement for the forestry grant. And I want to just say that it's right up the O P now. It is really just quite a long and interesting process. So, it's due on the 30th. I think we can make it. Then, on August 20th, I'm going to have a leaf meeting in New Paltz where we'll be planning for a fall workshop. And it'll be at Catlin Hall at SUNY Orange in Newburgh on October 17th. We've turned in our budget, and our major emphasis next year is, this coming year, is maintenance, because we have trees now that are six years old and need to be, you know, professionally pruned. And we may have to replace three trees. But overall, our, you know, our percentage has been quite good. We're making an effort to keep the loose trees going at the park, the ones that we moved from here. We did have, Claire, you'll be glad to hear that. Recently, they were given professional root treatment by Integro Tree and Landscape, so we're hoping to keep them going. This fall, we're going to have a very small planting. We will participate in hard scramble day. We'll hand out, you know, potted up tree seedlings and tree information. And I don't know if it's appropriate for me to mention, but, you know, we, Rose Enkin has moved on to different pastures, and I want to thank her. She was very hardworking and just did a tremendous amount on the tree committee. I can't thank her enough. We'll miss her energy and spunk, but she's moved on to other things. So, we have an opening on our committee, and I'm hoping if anyone is out there and they're interested in serving our committee, they would, you know, contact the board and express their interest. And our forestry management plan, which we're considering, considering it more of a draft right now, I did send a copy to the CAC and the planning board so that they can make comments or suggestions. And once I have that and we take one last look, I'm ready to, you know, ask that perhaps the town adopt it. That's it.
And when is the, when is it due, Nancy?
Oh, the, the forestry management plan, there is no, no special date. But the grant, the reimbursement information is due on the 30th.
On the 30th?
Yeah. But I, I think I can make it.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, so very nice.
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe we can skip back to department reports. Animal control, Brenda, I think you have that on.
Yes, from Stephanie. She, there were two dogs at large, and she had five wildlife calls, but they were all referred to wildlife control. I don't know, she, she probably needs a D E C. There, she had six calls about cats, and she referred them to the SPCA and to Batur Joe from the store in, in the village called Living Eden. She said, "This month I have called many people on the delinquent list, and most have not been in to relicense their dog. Next month, I will be issuing tickets to these people, since I have made phone calls to them, and the town has also sent letters."
Okay. She seems to be managing that role very well, doesn't she?
She does.
Yeah, that's great. Okay, I have an assessor's report. Since the last town board meeting, the assessor's office has been involved in the following activities. One, began sales analysis for next year's 2015 role. Number two, recorded changes to that role as directed by New York State as a result of the STAR registration program. Three, the assessor attended the New York State Assessors Association 2014 Cornell Seminar on Appraising, held in Ithaca. And four, data collection estimates to qualify for reappraisal revow. And he talks thereafter about the number of items in residential that have to be accomplished are 728. He estimates 20 per day. It'll take 37 days and full weeks. There are 96 commercials, and he feels that someone who's qualified to do commercial can do three a day, so that will take 32 days or seven weeks. The agricultural parcels are 18 in number, and three per day can be done. And there are some vacant properties, numbers of 50 in total. So, the total number of properties for reappraisal revow are 892. He says, "This total represents data collection of properties to qualify for reappraisal revaluation. Time required at this point is now over five months, and does not include prep or data entry. Required office hours are also not included." The reviews that he's discussed above are, do not include billing permits or sales reviews. And they don't include taxpayer requests for reassessment, nor analyzed model and test values. Diana and I, says Scott Hobson, are remaining committed to continued fair and equitable assessment practices and look forward to continued service to this community. Respectfully, Scott Hobson, assessor. Excuse me. And this is for your. Chris, do you have any change? There is no business manager's report, except to say that Ann Conway has managed, with a few hours' help from Debbie today, to pull off in her second week of work, a supervisor's report for all of us, and has accomplished the, all of the vouchers, and is ready to pay the bills tomorrow if I sign the checks. So, if those of you who have not signed the vouchers, please do so. She is working diligently, but she's lovely to work with, and I think she seems to enjoy being with us. So, we're very, very fortunate to have her here. And Debbie came in looking 10 years younger after having been on vacation. So, that was nice to see. Rose Breger has begun meeting with the employees and talking with individual department heads about their budgets. And I have to say out loud in front of the camera that this is going to be one of the toughest years that we've yet seen. I believe that the cap is going to be lowered to less than 2%. And I believe that our, the big ticket item that we face every year, which is medical benefits, could be as high as 19% increase. So, that just makes the whole proposition of balancing the budget a challenge, doesn't even describe it. So, I asked the board to have patience. I intend to work with Rose through this month and next, and we'll have the budget prepared, the tentative budget prepared as we need to, and published with the, the town clerk by September 30th, after which all of you here are going to have the great pleasure of wrestling with these figures and trying to figure out with me how we're going to get to where we need to go. So, I hope you have some fortitude, and I hope that I have patience left to get through it, because it's, it's not, none of, none of our counterparts are looking forward to the process. It's, it's just, it's just a very difficult time. And we all are committed to providing services and doing the right thing for residents, and to do that and stay within these constraints is going to be really tough. That said, we will try. So, an upfront budget. The building inspector, Bill, are you going to report that?
Building inspector, a very busy month. There were a total of five complaints that were received and examined by the building inspector's office. Certificate reports, total number of 24, that were handled by the building department during the month. Inspections, individual inspections totaled 40. And the permits, which were issued during the month, totaled 29. The amount of money collected fees during the period was $2,667. And that's the report.
Okay, thank you. Just a point of reference, information. The building inspector's report, Chris, is that part of free line information? Can someone come in and ask for that report and get it?
Yeah, I think that generally speaking, the report itself would be.
Right.
It tended to be.
I was just curious.
Kind of report, yeah.
Right.
Unless there's some specific, you know, matter going on that.
Okay, okay, thank you. There is a highway request that I'm going to respectfully ask Teresa to be patient about. She has, now, share it with you, I didn't make copies, I apologize, but she has made a request of me to consider purchase of a one-ton dump truck with plow for the highway department to replace truck number 29. And I have not, but I am going to answer her and ask her to be patient, and we will decide after we see where we are with the budget, because this is a significant amount of investment. And even though it's in this year's budget, 2014 planning budget, I'm just a little nervous, given what I said earlier about spending the budget down. So, I'm going to ask Teresa to hold on that request until we at least get the tentative budget. Is that reasonable? Do you think, do you all think that's a reasonable thing to do?
Yes.
Okay, okay. I don't want to be up there on one by myself, but I just think it's important. Okay. Brenda, you have a recycling?
Mm-hmm, I have a nice letter from the recycling manager, from T.J. Hackett. He says, "I have a few things I would like mentioned at the next board meeting. I would first like to mention a long overdue thank you to town resident Phil Seymour." I would first like to mention a long overdue thank you to town resident Phil Seymour. Not many people know the volunteer work Phil does at the center. When we take items into the Goods Building, there are times when we become overwhelmed with an abundance of less desirable materials that need to be disposed of. Phil graciously came many times throughout the years with his dump truck and hauled away and disposed the materials at no cost to the town. The Goods Building is so important to so many families in the town, and it is this kind of caring by Phil that helps tremendously in keeping the costs down so we can offer such an asset to our townspeople. Thank you, Phil. Operational-wise, everything has been going very well. There are some ideas I'm working on currently that I would, I think would be beneficial to our program. One is tire collection. I would like to try a trial collection of tires, working with a vendor. I am currently checking costs, et cetera, to see if this could be something worth pursuing. I hope to submit a proposal soon for the board's review. Secondly, as fall approaches, many town residents confront me on what to do with their leaves and yard waste, brush, et cetera. I know the village has a site for village residents to dump these items. Is there any way that we could work in conjunction with the village in allowing our town's residents to utilize this service as well? Or maybe develop a drop point of our own? I would welcome any considerations or thoughts, ideas, et cetera, to address this needed service. I would like to mention some much-needed improvements if they would fit economically. The first would be running water at the center. I'm not sure what kind of cost it would take, but would ask the board to explore the possibilities. I know he told me it would be very helpful for cleaning, cleaning out there. Secondly, heat in the Goods Exchange Building. We currently have a small propane heater that really does nothing in the cold of winter. If it was upgraded to include a blower-heater combination, it would help tremendously. Currently, the existing heater has no blower, and the only way to feel any warmth is to stand directly in front of it. The last thing I would like to mention is the outside appearance at the center. Would it be possible to maybe plant a few trees around the center? It would add a lot of character and scenic beauty to our location. In closing, I would like to thank the town board for their continued support and trust in me to guide the Town of Red Hook's recycling program. It has been rewarding to be part of the growth throughout the years. Respectfully, TJ Hackett, Recycling Manager."
Very nice report. Thank you, Brenda. I skipped by the police report, and I'll do that now. From the Red Hook Village Police Department, the family contract. I have the month of June 2014. Total number of incidents were 90, total arrests were 11, and total tickets issued And Dutchess County Sheriff's Department had a report for the month of July. A total number of incidents being 81. And it's broken down by days of the week, the busiest being Atlanta a Wednesday. Water District, Jim?
The latest report I have here is, Hank, is as of July, of course, it's just early. The water level in the wells is holding their own coliform tests, all satisfactory turbidity, chlorine residuals, right where you want it. Merely, everything's operating fine. He has plenty of both one-micron, five-micron filters on hand, and they're operating satisfactorily. He's gone over the work review, which is basically what he's talked about before. Next year, they hope to have the specifics on some work at the pump house to redo some more of those lines that we've spoken about in other reports. They've repaired some of the water tank fencing, you know, the poison ivy problem, the fencing at the water tower. And they're going to upgrade the water district inventory this year, too, which belongs to the water district. And that's it.
Thank you, Jim. Committee reports. Ag and Open Space, Bill, do you have anything on that?
Well, no, the Ag and Open Space Committee and the zoning review committee are awaiting their joint meeting. It had been scheduled for June, it was adjourned July, and in July, it was adjourned again to August. And in August, it's been adjourned to September. But anyway, they're working at it. And hopefully, in September, there will be the joint meeting with the ZRC and the Ag and Open Space Committee in review of that fencing issue, the agricultural fencing issue. So, I should have reported, hopefully in September, at least by October.
Thank you. I'm sure it's hard for the farmers to make in the summer.
Yes.
Okay, do you mind just going right to intermunicipal task force, Bill?
Yeah, weekly meetings in June and July. The intermunicipal task force continued to review the road standards for rural and suburban roads in the Town of Red Hook. And for roads within the traditional neighborhood district as proposed by the developer for the Old Farm Road Project. The consensus of the task force for specific road specifications for rural roads and for roads within the new TNDs have been referred to Green Plan, the planner for the town, for a final draft to be submitted, hopefully, for the consideration of the town board. So, that's pending.
And when was that referred? Was it recently? I haven't heard anything.
I think a couple would go. But it's, you know, we kind of run out of money, so we're trying to struggle and get some stuff done.
Right.
A planner without a curving grant.
This is one that, did you, did the task force have a recommendation to the planner about that roads back for the TND? I'm just curious. Did you have consensus about that?
Yeah, we did. There were a couple of issues that arose that hadn't been considered earlier. So, we had to look at them and resolve them, having to do with like curving, some things that are incidental to the actual specifications of the roads. So, I think we, again, have to make sure the Green Plan proposes language that is going to be sufficient for developers in the future so that they know exactly what they can do and what they're presented with. But I think the task force is pretty much resolved on the widths, you know, the specific road standards for now. There will be always in the background, an effort through, hopefully, a grant everyone will apply for into next year, which is something that the highway supervisor has been asking. And that is that the entire highway specs for the Town of Red Hook is a fairly luminous document that dates back, you know, many years. It's never really been updated. And so, we thought we'd try to get a grant, hire somebody to do that work. And so, but that's something down the road.
Most of that is engineering kind of decisions as opposed to visions of what a road looks like.
Okay. Harry, the rec commission, would you like to report that, please?
You know, they had a meeting last night. I have a multi-page report, but I'll summarize it. Essentially, a report of summer activities. The summer activities actually have moved along at a great pace. Some of the strange issues that come up, we have a poison ivy problem. And there was some, rather strident effort to get rid of the poison ivy with spraying by a contractor who is very accomplished at that. We had John start the summer with a staff meeting of all the people who'd be working in the rec park over the summer. And there are many concerns with employees in that environment. And the instruction was, covered all those concerns. Last week, we had a leaf and band concert at St. Margaret's that was actually, all the background work was done by the rec commission to get the facility ready, to prepare it and to follow up and to remove it. It was very successful. The summer rec program for the young folk just ended a week ago Friday, went off very successfully with Courtney as the new director. We had a lot of happy kids that went over a couple of times. And if the noise level is any measure, I'd say it was very successful. And by the way, last night, the commission, the meeting was directed at next year, beginning of next year.
Already.
Already. And this year isn't finished yet. By the way, the rec activity, it used to end on Labor Day, now is going on another month or six weeks.
Oh, okay. Okay, that's a lot of scheduling, I'll bet.
Yeah.
Involved. John and John are so good at it.
Yeah.
He was telling me today that he applied, as he always does every year, for the grant from Dutchess County Youth Bureau, was what it was used to be called. I'm not sure what the title of the department is now, because I think it's updated.
Yeah, I don't know.
But in any event, he applied for, I think, what was something like 1,400 and some dollars was what was viewed as available. And he was notified that he was given, or he was granted, because there were so many directors who did not complete the paperwork. He was granted much more than that, I think three times more than that.
Five thousand.
Five thousand. So, it's four times more than that. So, we should, when you see John, we congratulate him and thank him for his diligence because that paperwork isn't just dog work, you know? It just is, every year, I see what has to be submitted, and it's, you just got to go through it. And it certainly paid off this year. The other thing was, we had an audit from FEMA, New York State FEMA, who came in about, within the past two weeks, who were looking again at our records to make sure that they had everything in their system in a format that the federal government wanted so that they could get reimbursement from HUD. So, it's just an indicator of the amount of paperwork that goes on and documentation that goes on throughout all of these programs that are, albeit worthwhile and wonderful programs when we have disasters, but people like John and Teresa who walked through that process of application really worked hard. And they did yeoman's service and got us a fair share of what was available. And I just can't speak highly enough of either one of them for going to all that work. It was huge, huge amount of work. And they had everything that these people needed, and there was, there were no questions about the process that we had here. So, we were very, very happy for them and proud of them. Trees we've heard from, and I guess, my dear hearts, we are coming to the end of this meeting. I had some correspondence that I wanted you to see, but I didn't bring it with me. There were a couple of concerns, and it's in your correspondence folder about drainage. One was on Mill Road, and a woman wrote a very strong letter about drainage problems that had been worsening over the last five years, she feels, on her property. And I referred that to Teresa. There were a couple of other minor issues from town residents, but you can see them in the correspondence file. There's nothing that we have to take action on. I've referred them to appropriate departments. So, that is what I have. Has anybody got anything else?
No.
No?
No.
No? Okay. I need to ask you to vote to go into attorney-client. There are a number of items that we need to meet with your attorney about. If someone would move with that, we will do that and come back out here to close the meeting after we're finished. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. I didn't ask for public comment. I should have asked, but I didn't. Was there any nature?
I'm Hank Wagner. I just started as a full-time reporter for The River Chronicle, where a weekly paper that's going to be launching in about three weeks. So, this is my first assignment, is to just kind of observe, you know, and, you know, just write about this meeting. You'll probably be seeing me more often. You'll probably see my coworker Kyle Adams. He might come in a few times. But we're going to be covering 10,000 homes in Red Hook, Ryanbeck, Germantown, and Tibbely. Yeah, we expect our first edition to be entering people's, you know, homes August 22nd, I think it's a Friday.
Okay.
So, yeah, just wanted to introduce myself.
That's great, I'm glad you're here.
Yes, thank you.